Call to mean order. First order of business, approval of minutes, approval of minutes from April 3rd, 2023, regular and closed session.
I would move that we approve the regular and hold open for us to take into closed session tonight, so just approve the open meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the regular minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I have no public hearings, I have no agenda adjustments. Announce delegation, Mr. Jerry Thompson, 1427 Salisbury Avenue, to request the closure of a 15-foot unopened right-of-way. Jerry? Get near the microphone, Jerry.
Reason I'm here tonight is I'm trying to get a very old right-of-way the city has between two of my properties, between two of my houses. I'm trying to get it closed. It's between 1427 Salisbury Avenue and 1417 Salisbury Avenue.
And do you own both of those houses?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Mr. Ferris has staff looked at this?
There are some comments in the agenda package, that being that planning had a few comments to make regarding a larger right-of-way at the back of the property, which I think if abandoned might landlock or reduce access to that. And check with some other departments regarding services or future use of the smaller 15-foot right-of-way coming off Salisbury Avenue, and there were no concerns regarding that.
Jerry, have you had any discussion with the people that owns the back part that it would landlock?
Uh, no, sir, I have not. Now, you're talking about landlock, what?
If you close that road, Cap, staff is saying that they would not have access to their property.
I don't think that's what they're saying. I don't think that's what they're saying.
That's what you're not saying.
No, I don't think it's what they're saying.
Because...
There's an unopened street in the back there. From what we saw, this right-of-way is connected to that unopened street right-of-way. I don't think there's any problem closing the 15-foot right-of-way down, but we need some meets and bounds so that we can actually see what's being closed and that that back portion can remain open.
So Jerry asked me about this a while back, and he had a copy of what's before us right now. It's, looks like to me, you have suggested if we agree to do this, that we just need to recommend leaving the full 15-foot width of Meadow Avenue right-of-way in place.
That's correct, yeah. Right now, from our records, the only thing we could really see was that it basically is an L, like L shape with 15 feet coming off. We just need some meets and bounds so that that can actually be, that 15-foot section can be closed down and the other section remain open for future, future use back there.
So if council is agreeable to consider this, we need Mr. Thompson to get a survey before we...
See, that's, that's the reason I'm trying to get this closed, is because I had a surveyor came, came up and was going to survey all my property, houses and all I own Salisbury Avenue, and Barrett Kane to that house between my home place and the house beside of him, and he said, Jerry, we can't proceed any further because it's showing that the city has a right-of-way. And that's when I ceased the surveying. And that's why I'm here tonight, to try to get this taken care of where I can go ahead and proceed with all my surveying.
But I guess my question would be, is that we need that survey, is that not right, Kevin?
Yeah, I would think that Barrett could show that, sir, we don't have a plat or anything showing, I haven't found one. If there's one that exists, we can use that, but we haven't found anything. If he could show where that's at, where the pins are on there, then it would be able to proceed. We need to know where those two back corners are on it. If he could find that, show it to us.
So in other words, I need to talk to Barrett.
You talk to Barrett just so we can see exactly where it's going to be closed down at, and then for legal purposes, I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, if you're agreeable to him going ahead and having that survey, I would like you to indicate that, please.
I just would like to ask council, ask our legal counsel question. Britt, can we, based on that, getting those meets and bounds, go ahead and close it based on that being produced?
No, so we will have to go through the right-of-way abandonment procedure, and so the first step after getting those parameters will be to do a resolution like we normally do with council's intent to close the right-of-way, and we will set a public hearing for a future date, so that we couldn't just do it on a simple motion.
On a simple motion?
Yeah, we would need a resolution to come back with it.
With the resolution.
Instead of a public hearing later.
But if council is against it now, there's no use in having him spend his money on a survey. That's what I'm asking. Does council have a consensus that they're okay with moving forward?
I'm okay with it.
I'm fine with it. You don't want a motion, just tell them to do it. So get the, get the meets and bounds, get it back to Kevin, and Kevin then will do the next step.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Number seven, National Day of Prayer, 2023 proclamation. B, setting of a public hearing to consider a petition for annexation. C, consider road closures for the 2023 Pfeiffer University Falcon Night Out.
Your honor, I move approval of consent agenda with A and C, and to Paul B.
Okay. I have a motion to approve A and C and consider B separately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we'll consider B, setting of a public hearing to consider a petition for annexation.
I just, I hope that fellow council members have read what's before you, and I am against setting that public hearing.
Counsel, in case you have, are not aware of what it is, this is the piece of property on City Lake Drive that the county has approved building the housing that, and Mr. Bramlett, we're not having a vote of anything in particular, but if at some point later, if we do the annexation, I'll have to excuse you, but right now we do. The, the property was bought from the star and Bramlett, and their intention is to build a housing development on that that joins up to our City Lake. They have now decided to come and ask the city to annex it into the city and to build it under our standards rather than under county standards.
But is this the same property, your honor, that we, that we, that we rejected sometime by?
No, this is different property. It's the first time it's ever came to the city. This is the part that the county has approved off of City Lake Drive closer to 73.
It's across, actually, across the water. It's across the water.
It follows the water.
But the county has already, the county has approved them to do what they want to do within the county standards.
So it did not come before us at all?
It's never come before us. No, never come before us.
But there was another development, there was another development out there on City Lake Drive that we, that we declined.
Totally different, totally different location.
Thank you.
Counsel, what's your wish?
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitely that we set the public hearing to hear it.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion?
May 15th, correct.
May 15th.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We'll have a public hearing on May 15th.
And I just make sure I did not vote.
You're all right. I had previously asked, "Curry, you were okay with setting a public hearing, but when we come for the discussion, we will excuse you." Number eight, unfinished business, naming of the alleyway. Counsel, I get two proposals that have come from our contractor who had this engineer for us to look at. He wanted us to look at it because of the difference in the size of the letters are going to be. So I've sent you those two proposals, and if you went with a third one somewhere in the middle, it would be about halfway in between these two. Counsel, this is up, up to you, whatever you wish to proceed.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Courthouse Plaza.
Second. Go ahead, give it.
Do we know what the name of the courthouse parking lot going to be? I don't want everything in downtown named after courthouse.
I, I got, I particularly agree with you, Mr. Townsend, and we got Courthouse Square Park, and then they're going to have a parking lot. I guess it, I don't know how they'll name it otherwise, other than it's a courthouse parking lot.
Probably a county park. I mean, they, they might would make the county parking lot.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Those opposed? All right, 3-3? Is that what I am? I'm tied 3-3.
I don't know what are you, Chris?
I'm a...
You voted for it?
Wait a minute, that's...
Okay, then he voted for it.
4-2.
Then it's 4-2.
Okay.
That a done deal?
Yep.
Yes.
That's approved.
So, I'm sorry, the record, you were against.
Me against was Councilmember Townsend and Councilmember Hunt. Moving on to new business, number nine, consider bids for street preservation and maintenance contract. Presenting that, Mr. Ferris.
If there are any questions, Public Works Director Ross Holzhauser is here, but just to provide a high-level review is that this includes our funds from this year and last year to do a street preservation and maintenance project. The streets contained within that bid were previously approved to be put out for bid by city council, and it just gets the contractor to perform the work. The low bidder is J.T. Russell and Sons.
Counsel, may I make a question or comment?
I just wondered, do we not do any of that within the city? Do we do all of our street paving and everything by contract? I, I wasn't sure how that works.
Ross, do you want to explain when we do work ourselves and what level and equipment and skill that's sometimes beyond what we have capability of right now?
With a project this size, we don't have the workforce in-house to be able to do this type of specific work. This contract requires milling out the street and paving and resurfacing back. In years past, we've tried to do a hybrid mix where we would contract out a milling company, and then our street crew would come in and try to pave, and it, it just does not, doesn't work real well on a timeline, trying to work with different contractors with their schedule, our schedule, with different asphalt companies, leaving a street milled out for weeks at a time and weather. So we felt like with a project this size, it was just going to be better to do it all turnkey in-house.
A question, and we've had this before us, only in that we had it out for bid and we only got two bids back. Is that right?
Correct.
And then it had to go back out.
Right.
And we still only got two bids out. So I just think council needs to be aware of that, that we've done, have done our due diligence in requesting bids, but only got two.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
Another question, your honor, before, do we know when this is going to start?
What's your contract say for time?
When would it start?
It's on there.
With council approval tonight, staff will reengage with J.T. Russell and Sons. We'll have to go through the proper documentation, they'll have to secure bid bond, I mean, a performance bond. We've got the bid bond already with the bid, but the performance bond, so I'm guessing it's going to be, but if we go through all the, the signatures and the contracts, it may be a month or two, but really, we're going to be at their mercy too, because obviously they're a big contracting company and they've got projects around, so we'll, we have it written in the contract, and once we do the notice of award, they've got a certain amount of time before we can start, but we are granting them a little grace period since we're so late in the budget year.
Got you. Thank you.
Do we want to, for folks that are here and folks that are watching, to announce what those 13 pieces of pavement will be? I mean, I just, I think people want to know which ones are going to be for a total of 2.3 miles.
Do you have it, you want me to read it?
I've got it.
North Second Street from Salisbury Avenue to Ludlow, South Second Street from South Street to Hearn Street, Leonard Avenue from East Main Street to Eastover Avenue, Groves Avenue from East Main Street to Amherst Street, Krull Avenue from East Main Street to Amherst Street, Berry Avenue from East Main Street to Baden Road, Impala Drive from Moss Springs Road to Driftwood Lane, Driftwood Lane from Impala Drive to the Dead End, Woodhaven Drive from Highway 740 to Heathwood Drive, Walnut Street from Monroe Street to Long Street, Wood Street from Monroe Street to Roger Street, Hemlock Drive from Crescu Drive to Brenda Drive, and Brenda Drive from Collins Drive to Arbor Way. These were recommended by the engineer that did the study for the streets for the city.
You need an approval, sir?
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion?
To approve the low bid.
To approve the low bid, sure. Yeah, J.T. Russell.
So have a further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. B, discuss award of the Long Creek Stormwater Grant. Mr. Ferris?
Again, just the intro, and if there's further follow-up questions, we've got staff that could answer in further detail, but city council had previously authorized staff to apply for planning grant for Long Creek, and there were two different grants pursued. We've already received one. This one that we received notification of for stormwater study on the southern portion of Long Creek is coming from the state. It's in the amount of $400,000. No matching funds, so we do want to get council, even though it was authorized that we apply, want to get council's concurrence and approval on accepting it, because you'll note in the letter and then in the cover sheet, it says that if we accept these funds, that a city must have a adopted stormwater management plan for the study area completed by July 1 of 2026. So I don't think that's anything that city council was not aware of, but want to just make that perfectly clear, so when decisions are made, that everyone's on the same page.
And the definition of the plan does not include having to charge residents, it's just that we have to adopt a plan, correct?
I don't know that I can answer that.
I think we've got to realize that if we have a plan, we've got to have a way to come up with some revenue to do whatever needs to be fixed. I think that's where we've, I mean, we've got to do that.
I would, I would agree, it's, it's similar to the Golden Leaf Grant. When council adopted the resolution for the Golden Leaf Grant to accept it, there was a, in the resolution, they are funding these pilot studies with the expectation that some of the mitigation will take place. However, council chooses to fund those mitigation efforts is up to council. That would be the way I would interpret establishing a plan.
We've got to have some way to pay for it.
I wouldn't.
2026 is what the, this, this one approves, this Mr. Ferris has in the agenda. And then, again, council would have to decide at some point how they're going to fund it and what kind of mitigation they're going to do. This plan would give you the mitigation that they tell us we need to do, and we're agreeing to do some of it if we accept this grant.
And I would offer that we won't decide what mitigation we want to do, because they, those studies will tell us what needs to be done. I mean, that's, that's the reason we were, accept this, to be able to get the money, to be able to be told what we need to do, and then if we need to do it, then we're agreeing that we've got to get it done.
Over time, yes. Not by 2026.
No, but we will, we will have, the completed plan and documentation of it's got to be done by 2026. I move that we accept the, this $400,000 awarded grant, and with the commitment that we will have an adoption of a plan by July 1 of 2026, an adoption of the plan.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One against. Moving on to number C, consider request for sanitary sewer extension outside of the corporate limits of Albemarle. Mr. Ferris?
This one takes a lot more detail than the high-level overview, so I'm going to call on Mr. Boils, he's coming forward to provide a detailed overview of what is the request and some of the city's options.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So in front of you tonight is a request to extend sanitary sewer collection services outside of the corporate limits of Albemarle. I provided you a very detailed memo in your agenda packet, which you should have. Essentially, this, this property should be familiar to y'all. It was the one that recently came up for, for the option to annex it. New London currently has more of a vested right to annex it into their corporate limits. As of right now, it's my understanding that we do not have the ability to annex this property. That does not preclude the fact, however, that our sanitary sewer services come up to the southern property line of the property that our sewer services currently run through. They are accessible to the property, so current policy pretty much says that anytime that there is a request to extend sewer services outside the corporate limits, it must first receive council's approval. So again, I provided a memo for your reading pleasure, and I'm more or less here to answer any questions. I will tell you that the request order is here tonight, Mr. Galway with Lennar. If you have any questions of him.
Counsel, have any questions of staff?
Have we, have we done these before? Have we done, I don't remember this coming before council since I've been here. Are you aware of situations we've done sewer outside?
In my immediate knowledge, we had a very small request approximately maybe a year and a half ago. This was, this was literally to the benefit of about three customers over on Kingsley Drive. We extended sanitary sewer north on Kingsley towards City Lake. That, however, was a sewer assessment where the applicant, you know, went through the special assessment process, paid the assessment fees, and, and was granted.
And in that case, you just said it, they paid the assessment fee, whatever that was, to get it.
Yes, ma'am.
And about, I know this is not fair to ask this, but about how far was that?
That was approximately 300 feet or so, and we, you know, the city actually, and through the special assessment process, the city designed the improvement and the city installed the improvement as well. This is slightly different, where this would be going for a larger project, the developer would, you know, be doing all the design work, they would be doing the installation, and then after, after they are done, those services would be turned over to the city for, for maintenance and operation.
And that process, if I'm correct, Jay, is, would be the exact same process and the same onus placed on the developer if it was something already inside the city. They would, if it was our annex, somebody was wanting to develop a large-scale subdivision within the city, this would be that same process.
That's correct.
The question before council is because there's no obligation to serve with it being outside the city limits and having had the issue of annexation discussed between Albemarle and New London.
So further question, within the, within the body of the letter that you submitted, you have mentioned that Pfeiffer North Stanley, what their part would be in this. I think we need, for just complete clarification and transparency, we need to hear that part.
Sure. So the water provider would be Pfeiffer North Stanley Water Association. They currently have water services along 52 North. They have existing services also along the Carter Road area. So if this property were to be developed, the water would be pulled in as the primary source off of 52 North, and then in talking with Mr. Burnside, Pfeiffer North Stanley would require the water services to be looped around Carter Road coming in north of Sawmill Road and through the back of the property as well. So Pfeiffer North Stanley would be the water purveyor in retail. If council approved this request, the city of Albemarle would be the sewer service. And how that works from the billing standpoint is how we basically measure the amount of sewer flow that we have, we read the water meter. So whatever the water meter says, that is what goes on your sewer bill. Again, in talking to Mr. Burnside, they have similar arrangements with Stanley County right now, where Pfeiffer North Stanley will go read the water meters, they will provide the county with an Excel file, the county will then type in those reads manually into their billing system, and then bill for sewer. So the city would, same situation, would collect those reads from Pfeiffer North Stanley and then put that in our billing system and bill the future customers as sewer-only customers at the outside city limits rate.
Counsel, there's a little bit more to consider on this. Typically, when we do this, we have different outside the city rates than we do inside the city. And if you've been keeping up with the legislature, there's a bill before the legislature to limit what municipalities can do outside of the city. So it would be a little bit of a gamble not knowing what your charge could be. You could charge the inside rate and maybe a little bit, but not knowing until that legislature decides on that bill, I can't tell you you would charge like you typically do right now everywhere else. I guess I would, just a minute, Kevin. I guess one of the things I would want to ask the developer is why he's not considering going to the county, because the county, we already have an agreement with the county where they could extend it, put it in a metering station. So I guess I would ask that, why are you not looking at doing it in the county? Because you're, you're building the, the houses in the, in the...
County.
Kevin, step over a minute, Kevin. You're building the houses in the county, but you're wanting to do the city sewer. Is there some reason why you're not looking to do the sewer in the county?
Can you come on up to the microphone, please?
Yeah, come on, come on up, please.
So everybody can hear you. Thank you.
The Albemarle sewer is much closer, it's about 15 feet from our property. I'm not sure where the closest county sewer is, but it's miles.
Well, Mr. Boils, correct me if I'm wrong. The county has an agreement, they could put in a metering station if the city so allows it, and that could be, be the county line from that point forward, right there, correct?
That's correct. We would, if, if that was an option, if the developer wanted to pursue that option, we would have the county put in a flow meter at Manhole 13, which is the termination manhole, and then we would basically bill the county for bulk flow rate.
Mr. Ferris, Robinson, do you have a comment you want to make?
Just, just general. Again, this is just, just big picture, planning really stuff, and I don't, I don't mean to be Negative Nancy on this or anything. In fact, I mean, we, we spent a long time working with the developer on this property to bring in for the annexation previously and working on the interlocal agreement, trying to find all, all the information on that between New London and the city. That said, I would just urge council to keep in mind that, you know, at this point sewer is really one of your only ways that the city can grow. Back in the day, we were able to do agreements on sewer and later on go back through and broadly annex areas into the city. We don't really have that tool anymore, so once you give it away, these areas are largely gone. They're going to remain in the county most likely forever. So, you know, you want to make sure you don't box yourself in. Also, you know, we have looked at it, there are options for making the property to the south of this contiguous going across Carter Road. That is an option as well, at which point that could potentially be annexed by the cities, that's available also. But I just want you to, perhaps council could keep that in mind when making the decisions on, on these.
Who would treat that sewage?
Could...
We would.
City would.
Either way.
Let's bring the owner, owner back, owner back up, see if he has any comments or questions. You've heard the discussion, anything you want to say or ask?
I mean, this originally started, the ultimate goal was to be in the city of Albemarle, but that didn't work out for us. So when I spoke with Jay, he felt that this...
Sir, can you speak in that microphone? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Our original goal was to be in the city of Albemarle, but that didn't work out for us, and then when I spoke with Jay, he felt that this would be the next best option for the city and us.
You have not spoken to the county even considering that, but you are building the houses under the county, county guideline.
Yes, we've yet to do rezoning through the county. That would be the next step after this.
Questions, counsel, for the owner?
I'd like to put a motion on the table, and first of all, tell...
Before you put a motion on the table, I have something else to speak. Any questions for the owner?
I still didn't get a clarification. Who, you're going to have sewers there, who treats that sewage?
The city.
The city.
Even if it's county?
Yes, the city does.
Even if the county does it, the city does it.
Yeah.
But that's correct. Part of the question is, in this situation, is if it was constructed and the sewer infrastructure within a subdivision would then be turned over to the city, so then it would also be an issue of the city's operation and maintenance of the sewer system from there forward, not just, not just the treatment, but there's also the operation and maintenance within the subdivision that's not inside the city.
Further questions for the owner? Can I have another gentleman who wishes to speak, Danny Buchanan, U.S. Highway 52 North, New London?
Good evening. Thanks for having me speak again. Myself and the surrounding property owners to this property would not like the sewer run down there. The landowners are wanting to sell the land to, it was Lanier Homes. And they had a representative to come to the town of New London meeting. And they were asked, there's 147 acres on this property. I'm guessing maybe 40 acres of it might be flood zone, which leave 100 acres. But the Lanier Homes was asked twice, what's the amount of houses that you're planning to put in this property? And originally, there was a zoning paper put up to be rezoned to go to an R10. R10, I think, has, you can put as much as four houses per acre, which would be 400 houses in there. The gentleman that was with them said, on the second question after they asked him, he said their intent was to put four houses per acre. Okay, after the meeting was over, there was a few of us, we were outside. And he told us, he said, if we can't put four houses there, we can't do it. He said, we just can't do it. So with that being said, originally, it was tried to be zoned. They took the paperwork back off the road. And I think they were trying to go a different route. Town of New London turned it down. And I think what they're trying to do now is to get this sewer put in. Pfeiffer brained their water that way. Once this gets done, then they're probably going to come back and want to get this zoned at that time to an R10. Now, I'm not here trying to stop progress. I think I told you all that before. But if we could build houses like this over in Carter Acres or something like that, I don't have a problem. But when you're talking 400 houses going in there by this company, I just don't see how we can justify that. The school system, I think I told you all that before. And one other thing that I have here is that I didn't have for y'all, but I did have for the town of New London, is owned this company, Lanier Homes. Now, I didn't get the paperwork out to y'all when, you know, in time or something, but I'd be more than happy to give y'all a paper. One's from the Better Business Bureau and the other one is from Consumer Affairs. And the one from the Better Business Bureau, I have nine...
Danny, I'm going to stop you just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Just a minute. We're not talking zoning...
I know, I know.
Or houses tonight. We're talking about extension of the sewer. So I'm going to go to my attorney and ask first, should I allow him to continue talking about somebody else?
So is council's prerogative how long you allow him to speak on just the general issue, but it is simply about the sewer? Obviously, since the annexation didn't go through, council doesn't have control over how many houses are on the lot or any density because it's not in the corporate limits. So the focus should be on the sewer arrangements.
Thank you. So I am hearing that you can make comments, but we're going to keep it to the sewer.
I got you. Okay. Well, what I'm getting at is, go ahead and get the sewer in, get the water in, then it's just stepping up to the next step to be done, you know, to bring in all these houses in and everything like that.
Council, have any questions of Mr. Buchanan? Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's time.
What is the current status? How many houses could be built with the current zoning?
Sir, Mr. Bramlett, that is in the county, and the county would have to make that decision.
Yeah.
They can look at R10, they can look at cluster. We can't make that decision.
No, I know that, but I just, he's talking about that. But we've got, as it is right now, how many houses can be built there?
I'm not a zoning expert for the county. I'll have to defer and ask Mr. Robinson if he has any idea.
He said they'd go for R10, but what is it now?
Yeah. So Jay informed me this is owned RA, which is residential agriculture in the county. And that is roughly two housing units per acre. Depending on what the property is like and what your septic is like, if they don't have sewer out there, they could get two units per acre. Most likely, it's probably going to be a little bit less than that. It's probably going to be about one to one and a half per acre with what exists. And a lot of developers aren't going to want to mess with the infrastructure to go in for that density.
Mr. Aldrich?
Now, I should say, we have seen the other one you saw tonight, Long Lake. That came back as a conditional rezoning at the county. The county is doing density. It's very similar to what we're doing right now with that conditional zoning. So it is possible they could do that as well.
Mr. Aldrich, you got a comment?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Just before the motion, I just want to thank staff for their due diligence on every aspect of this. I know it takes a lot of time to go through that, that whole process. So thank you very much. And I'm also ready. And I'll either make it or I just, I move that we deny the request.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to deny the request. A second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to D, approval to seek a rural transformation grant.
Mayor, I'll say a few words to sum up what is in the agenda package, which is we have a good opportunity before us to have some movement and progress on to existing improvements, projects, existing plans that would allow us to make improvements onto Fourth Street. There is a rural transformation grant application that is now being taken to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And we have talked for a while about extending our streetscape master plan look to Fourth Street. We've extended several areas over the downtown. We're making good progress on that. But this grant has provided an opportunity to seek funding to make some of those additional improvements on Fourth Street. And while that was taking place, we also have the ability to then consider some of the parking and traffic flow improvements the council has been talking about regarding the parking improvements, enhancements, additions within the downtown. So applying for the grant does not, is not contingent on having any decision about traffic flow or about the parking arrangement. What it means is we can get funding for some of the things. We know we want to do sidewalk improvements. There'd be some engineering, some landscaping, some streetscape improvements. It would accelerate that process, but it does not lock us into any improvements in terms of traffic flow or parking. But the window of opportunity for the grant is now open. Worked with administration, planning, public utilities and public works. And the grant application does seek a resolution of approval from the body. So that's the item before you see me.
Move approval.
Second.
I'd like to have Councilmember Hall approve the resolution. Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion.
Question, who will be, who has, who has or will be writing this grant?
Probably a combination of all of us. Our assistant manager, Darren Rose, will be taking the lead and coordinating the effort.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
Don't believe I have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
Just a general inquiry. I think probably about three or four months ago, when we last got an update on, I guess, houses and stuff, one house that was on the list at that time, which has also been on the list probably since 2017, at least from what I've found in emails today, was 443 Cosson Street. During the last meet, I mean, that meeting when we got the last update four months ago, I think it was stated that the house was in the process of being sold. And once it's sold, they would have 30 days to take the property down. And I'm just wondering, I don't know if the house have actually changed ownership and/or where do we stand with 443 Cosson Street? Because I noticed several other houses and dwellings have been brought up with a lot shorter period of time than that. And like I said, I went back and referenced how long this has been an item. And it's going back to 2017 that I'm aware of.
Mr. Robinson, do you have an answer or will you need to bring it to us?
I don't have an update. I got an update from Greg on that today, but there was no change of that. He said they were, he was still waiting on the property owner to take control of that so it could be taken down.
So should we have taken action then to speed up that process? Because I was of the impression when we had that update four months ago, that it was pretty much something in the works where they would be changing ownership and things moving in a expedient manner.
Yeah, it very, very much was. And I mean, it's just a, it's a judgment call on our part. I mean, you're looking at, you know, at least $5,000 or $6,000. And, you know, we're already a little bit over on budget on everything else we've taken down. So we were trying to kind of hold off and see if that one happened. But I mean, it's, we've got the ordinance for it. If it doesn't happen, we will be happy to take it down. We'll put it as one of the first ones on for next year. And I'll try to get an update for you on that from, have Greg get in touch with the current owner right now.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Townsend?
That's it.
Mr. Bramlett?
Just say thank you for Courthouse Plaza. I think that name rings a bell for downtown. But I hope it doesn't take as many more years to get that done. It has to get to this point. Because we've been at this for years and years. And I'd like to see that project finished.
Mr. Aldrich?
Just one thing. I know we're going to have another meeting before, I guess. Yeah, we'll have several meetings before. But just want to remind everybody watching and listening, the Wampus Cats will have their home opener on Memorial Day, which is Monday, May the 29th, at 6:00 PM at Don Montgomery Park. So just would like to encourage everybody in the community to go ahead and start spreading the word. We need to pack the house. We need to support this deal. It's a very competitive league. If you've ever done your research on it, it's going to be a lot of fun. It's a big lift for Albemarle and Stanley County and the surrounding area. So again, I want to encourage you to buy the shirts, buy the hats, come out there, support this team, and let's get involved in this deal. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Hall?
Just checking that right now, are we still on for the burn at Spate and Baden Road? Are we still on for the burn on 426?
Nothing's changed since the end of last week.
So does that mean that are we going to be able to do it or not?
If the state will advance the permit from one department to another. The temporary permit, as I understand, is from one agency, but they're waiting on final approval. So what we've done to be prepared in case air quality gets it over, or one department gets it to another, one division gets it to another, is everything is lined up. Now, if they don't approve it, then it can't take place.
I just, I'd like for us to be able to stay on top of that. And if anything changes at all, I've just got folks that keep asking me all the time. Follow up to burn. I know that Ronnie last meeting asked about the, that garage that was at the back of West, on West Main. Has anybody followed through on that? If that should have come down as well?
Mr. Robinson has been at a meeting and out of town. So I can't give you an answer on that.
Well, I just, okay, just at some point, we need...
I'll follow up with him.
So...
If you have an answer now, fine, yes.
Concern is that it straddled on the property line. So we didn't want to take it down at that time. And it wasn't taken down at this time either. So it's one of those things. We've taken the others down. We can probably take it down too now. I mean, we had an ordinance for both of those properties at this time, so.
So that would be my question. Legally, is it in our camp now to do something with it since it was right between those two properties?
I think after taking down properties on both sides, on both properties that it sits on, I think we could. Yeah.
So I guess I would ask then that if it's something that's ready to be done, that we do it.
Just, and if it straddles the property lines and we had ordinances for both parcels, that makes sense. But I would just want to double check the property lines before we go ahead and take down a structure that may be straddling multiple owners.
Yeah, that's why we didn't take it down the first time. But it does make sense.
Thank you.
At one point, we were closing, we were releasing closed minutes. And I think that we've gotten through 18. Have we gotten further along than that? 2019 has been done, okay? And I've not been downtown on a Saturday night lately to see what's going on with the Saturday night markets. Does anybody know? Or has anybody been around? Is that still even going on? Do what? It's, it's not been going on at all. I did see a great deal of activity on, I think it was Saturday or Sunday night on the scooters. And they were even on the sidewalks, whatever night it was that I saw them. There's been some information, Mayor, about a meeting with HUD. What are we doing there? I know that there was an answer that...
We are waiting on them to give us a reply.
Well, and I think Mr. Ferris gave them a date.
Yeah, we're still waiting on them to reply. So we don't have a final answer yet.
But I think what I was getting to is that Mr. Ferris said to them that we all could be there one of two dates. And that partial, some of us could be there the next week. Do we know that? Because I've not, I mean, I didn't know about those second three dates.
We're still waiting on them to see what they want to do. Soon as we hear something from HUD, then we'll proceed.
Okay. FYI, there is a grant workshop that COG is doing. And that's the reason I asked who is doing that. Grant proposal, they're always open for anybody that wants to come. I would like to, at the next meeting or before, have a breakdown on how much the city has paid to Star Resources this year. There is a litter pickup. Is it this week? Is it this Saturday?
Saturday, 9 o'clock.
Saturday, the 22nd.
Rock Creek.
At Rock, well, I saw it Rock Creek, but then I also saw, I saw something at Waddell. I saw something at Waddell. So starting at 9, I think they're saying gathering it over there at 8:30 is one of the things I last, things I read. And we will not meet again before the courtyard tour that the Stanley County Historical Society is doing. I would just say that that's the 29th, if anybody wants to go to that. And it's time of the year, guys, that we're going to be getting phone calls from grown-up areas, grass grown up. And I sent some of that out today to Mr. Ferris of a couple of places that had been brought to my attention. That's it. Thank you.
Only thing I have, I'll just tack on to what Bill said. If you miss the Wampus Cats home opener, they're going to have 25 home games this summer.
That's right.
Between Memorial Day and around the end of July. So they're playing like three days in off one, three days in off one, you know, traveling. But 25 of the games will be down here at Don Montgomery. So hopefully you can catch some up.
And you could buy season tickets.
Yeah, season tickets, $125.
$125.
Mr. Hunt?
No comment.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A 3 and 6 for a consultant attorney and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Back into regular session.
Prove.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Councilmate in reference to General Statutes 143 31811A 3 and 6 for consultant attorney and personnel. Coming out of closed session, I will also entertain a motion that we approve the closed session minutes that was presented to us tonight with one change that this, that we will make into one set of closed session minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further. All in favor say aye. Okay, Ms. Hall, you have something?
No, I just, as we were, well, yeah, we do. We've noticed, and it's a good thing, that there's been some activity at that 115, 117...
West Main.
West South Street, which was David Beaver's building.
You're more up on that than I am.
I mean, I just, I wanted to... I mean, I just, I wanted to make sure that fellow council members knew it.
The, the developer, Mr. Carpino, has been working on those properties and we're meeting with him and city staff on Wednesday to talk about utility connections. So he's very interested in getting started on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Derek.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until May the 1st at 6:30 PM. And if we get another date with the HUD meeting, we will have to announce that and advertise it before we can have that meeting. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.